Where a person that be property owner, that is, and told your property is going to be designated as historical and come under this, could appeal. It sounds like maybe this goes back to the city council from what the administrator was saying a little while ago. If a person applies to the commission to have their property included under this and it's rejected by the commission, they can contact the commission directly and appeal it directly to them. Why the runaround? Quite frankly, I've been involved with city government since 1989. The planning commission, to the best of my knowledge, has never been overruled by this council, no matter who sat in the chairs. So that argument, well, it could be overruled by the council, is, to me, is basically a mutant. In effect, what it's doing is providing a method of taking, and Mr. Kenyon can, with his attorney degree, could give you the information of what is a taking. You're taking the rights of that property owner with no remuneration, but requiring them to follow their, the commission's rules. I don't disagree with trying to preserve some of our historical facilities. I worked in one. It's still sitting out on Ranger Hill. It's fallen apart, but it's still sitting out on Ranger Hill. That's a historic building, and whole complex is. But this idea of not being able to appeal it, there is no, no remuneration for this grandiose little plaque that somebody might put on the front of a structure, if it's going to be a structure, or if it's a land area, like the mine, that's historic for this area. I just don't agree with the way this thing is worded. A hospital situation, to me, that was decided basically by the county board. They own the building. The city doesn't own that building. They decided. Do I agree with it? Not fully. I think it could be redeveloped, but we're sitting here beating each other with gloves over something that, if we continue to do that, it's going to disappear. It'll disappear real fast. I agree with that comment that was made. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pullman. Is there anyone else? Mr. Pullman?
I'm not against the ordinance. I'd rather see some changes in it, because I, as a homeowner of a 19, I think it was 1912 that it was built, I, if somebody wants to call that a historic building, if I'm not in agreeance with it, I think there needs to be something else that's done other than, oh, too bad, we're doing it anyway. Yes, I think as a property owner, I should have that right to at least negotiate, or there's got to be a better way to go about that. I'm not saying it would happen, but if the property owner's not on board, it's, you just don't feel good about it, and this is irrelevant of the hospital or any other building like that. I'm just thinking as a property owner, to me, you can even call it out that way as a residence that you can have, because it does add, to me, it adds a lot of potential financial burden on the property owner, especially if you go to sell that house, because now there's stipulations on, this is the only way you can renovate that, that building, this is the only way you can work, things of that nature. I guess I'd like to see something along that line get added or changed.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here? Does my kind of reply to Mr. Henshaw?
We're not going to respond back to the others.
No response, okay. Is there anyone else?
I'd like to know what qualifies as a historic building, and another fact is, the county owns that building. So where does the city get the authority to come in and say they're going to classify that as a historic building? Who's decision is it?
All I'm going to say is, I'm not going to get into back and forth on this, but that stuff is in the ordinance.
Yeah, Sister Cecilia Pendleley, with the Russ County Historic Society, as well as a member of the Servants of Mary. And, excuse me for my throat, but this happens. Very interested in history, especially history of our county and our, and our city, and that's what the museum is about, the Historical Society is about. We do have some wonderful things out there that tell the story of the people who live here, lived here, and created this, this town in this, this county, and buildings are part of that. It's part of the, it's part of the, the mission of the Historical Society to preserve sites, or to work toward the preservation of, of historic sites. And I think that sites are historic, not only because of the structures of the buildings, but also what happened inside of them, and who are the people that helped to make it happen. And I know from the history of our community, from 1913 on, we were, we were engaged in this project, along with businessmen and doctors and so on, and it was all of us together that saw that health care was provided for a very poor area. There was no hospital around for like 60 miles, or whatever, there were accidents, there was the flu, there was everything that came in, and a lot of blood, sweat, and tears of people went into that building, as well as into the running of it. How many had, how many of Lady Smith residents are, were born in that hospital, you know, or whatever it was. I think health care has been one of the things that has made Lady Smith strong, good health care. And this, preserving this site, preserving this building, through the preservation ordinance, or using that as a tool, I think is very good. And it might not be the only time. I, I can understand people who own property, you know, but I think, and I'm not sure, because I want to know what I read in the paper, I think there are tools within the process that would engage property owners, you know, with, with the commission to work out the best thing for that. But I would like to see some historic sites restored in Lady Smith.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council at this time on landmarks and historic preservation ordinance?
Thank you. Is it proven to follow past practices on public hearings, unless different requirements were given at the beginning of the public hearing?
It's never been made in.
Okay. Well, first of all, I guess I heard lots of reference to, I read this in the paper, now, Mr. Kling, I don't recall anything being provided to you that said this was for the hospital.
Mr. Administrator?
I believe I've got emails dating back to January 25th.
Would you rather discuss this?
No, I'd rather discuss it here in public comment.
All right.
So I, if you'd like, I can go on the other side of the table.
You are a member of the public.
Got an email from January 25th from the housing developer at the old elementary school, asking if the city had a horp historic preservation ordinance, and talking about the way such an ordinance would benefit them, when it comes to energy efficiency and other requirements that might add considerable costs to their project. Now, Mr. Pullman III, not picking on you, but I believe you and I had some discussions related to that, so you can probably confirm that. Also had a contact from a private citizen who was looking at using a building that was not the hospital on March 15th, asking if the city had historic preservation ordinance, because the person they were working with informed them that they too could be basically grandfathered in to some modern building codes for reuse for the building, if such a, an ordinance existed and if the city deemed their property historic. I believe the Community Development Committee met on March 27th and discussed a draft ordinance, which was prior to any vote on the hospital, as I recall. I think they had a meeting a week or two before that where a draft ordinance was passed out. So in all that, I didn't hear anything about a hospital project or the hospital being considered. Mr. Kling certainly wrote a nice article and had a decent idea that you could include the hospital on a historic register if one, one was made, but as far as I know, that wasn't in anything, and I'm happy to provide all those texts, all those emails, all of Yeah, so I guess I'd refute the claim of anything being done in a hasty manner. Last two points that I would make is, could you raise your hand if you're on the County Property Committee? You guys the full committee?
Pardon?
You make up the entirety of the County Property Committee, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Did you notice this as a county meeting or a county non-meeting like you're required to?
It's not a county meeting.
Okay.
It's a city meeting.
And a quorum of you, I think three of you spoke in county business?
Yes, you know, this is my personal opinion. I could be here alone, or with somebody else, doesn't matter. Fact is, if I was to meet at the T.O.A. and have to run in to the same group of golfers, is that a legal forum?
I think it depends on what you're talking about.
Well, you have to say what we're talking about.
I was talking about your ordinance, but if this is related to the county, I understand. No, it doesn't, that's what you're saying.
Anyway, that, I believe is all I, all I had.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak about this ordinance? With that, we'll close this portion of the public hearing. Dr. Purdy, were you here for agenda item on the special assessments?
No.
No.
Okay.
Maybe you're on, you're on that, that list there.
Okay, moving on to agenda item 5C, public hearing on ordinance 2023-03, revising room tax ordinance. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the council on that ordinance?
Sue Moore. Yeah, Sue Moore. I chair the Russ County Tourism Committee, as I mentioned earlier, and we have discussed this a little bit at our meetings the last couple of months, and I just want to mention that I think increasing the room tax would be a benefit to the community with more funds available to actually market our area, and to attract more people with events and additional amenities. And sometimes we tend to shortchange ourselves by not charging enough for something, and this goes for rental property or lots of different things, but in this case, I think it would be acceptable to increase it, maybe 2%, up to 6% if that's what the council decides, or a little bit, because we would have more funds available to put back into the community, which is what you need to actually market. And most vacationers don't pay a lot of attention to room tax, you know, you've got your federal and state tax to pay, and they don't ask, I don't know if anybody else, you know, recognizes that fact, but normally you don't ask, oh, how much is the room tax? What percentage is the room tax?
State rent.
It's just, it's just taxed on the rent of the room, $150 a night, and so on. And so people don't, I don't think, really take that into consideration. So I would like to see you increase the room tax for our benefit.
Thank you.
Superbowl appeal? Yes, it does, yes. I have trouble with hearing that, so maybe when, maybe that was a...
Cheyenne McKenna, I sit on the Tourism Committee, and I also manage the American and Harlem East as well, and this was an idea that I had, was generated when I went to the state governor's conference this past spring, and heard over and over again from people that study this on, and looking at how they market, and they had said that room tax was not a deterrent for people, they're still going to pay that and come here, and I know that in the Tourism Committee, we've had a lot of discussion about how to support the Saturday hours at the visitor's center, and I also sit on different community events, organizations that help put on things in the community, and I just see that this is a benefit to everyone that lives here, that we can bring more people in and support those initiatives, which then helps our neighbors with, you know, their businesses, more rooms are rented. So I just see that this is a benefit to our community, and I think it'll just provide a lot more opportunities.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this ordinance 2023? Okay, we'll close this portion of the public hearing. This brings us to item D, review and possible action to adopt ordinance 2023-02, landmarks and historic preservation ordinance of the city of Lady Smith. Does anyone wish to entertain a motion?
Okay, talk about, you know, when you're calling, how is this thing better than Aaron doing, you're yelling? It's the same thing, basically, I mean, it's good garbage, you know, I've had hearing issues, and they've been going for a couple of weeks.
Do you want to address some, or? Do you have anything to add to the meeting, or otherwise we're picking up your comments? Okay, otherwise I will mute it, and then open it up for the public comment.
Is there anyone that wishes to entertain a motion on item 5B?
I would add some discussion if allowed, if not, that's fine, too.
Actually, I will let you have some discussion, because I wish to have some discussion as well.
Thank you. So, yeah, again, back to this, this, this did come out of the old elementary school developer, believe it or not, and, yeah, I can definitely share that other contact I had regarding reuse of another building, not called the hospital. This was something that the city actually toyed around with back in 2010, I believe, give or take. Yeah, didn't get, didn't get adopted back in 2010, because, yeah, we didn't want to infringe on anybody's rights, and certainly, yeah, you don't want to infringe a whole lot on property owners' rights, but what's happened since 2010, the Methodist Church, as Mr. Hauser noted, got torn down, you know, it got in worse and worse shape. If there was preservation ordinance back in 2010, would there have been some teeth to, I don't even think the county took ownership of that in 2010, it was probably 15, 20, I don't know, so, but it definitely wasn't in 2010, I believe the private gentleman installed that.
Who sold it?
Methodist Church, yeah.
What kind of time is it?
Anyway, what I'm getting at with that is, had that ordinance been passed in 2010, and there was teeth to require upkeep on it, or require that, that it get it into somebody's hands that could do something with it, you know, Mr. Hoover, just as an example, I think we all know his work, it might still be standing today, might not have cost the county $134,000 to tear down, that the city reimbursed them through TIP aid, might be in a productive use, something better than a gravel parking lot. We don't know, because nobody's got a crystal ball, you can, you can look back and whatever, but I think we've seen in the last year or two, the Gerard Hotel is empty now, because the heating system failed on that. That's also a very, very historic building here in town, it's one of the first things you see when you're driving up the bridge, if there was a vice president or vice president candidate that stayed there at one point in time, what do we do with that? Do we just let it continue to crumble? Or do we put some maintenance and teeth? You know, it makes no sense just to let people hold stuff in perpetuity, not, not our property, not our jurisdiction, but the tinker tot in the town of Flambo, look at what that is now. You know, there was a time when that could have been saved, and put into a productive use. We, my wife and I were in Taylor's Falls a couple weekends ago, they've got an old drive-through that's just bopping, you know. There's all those examples, plus the city's current housing developer could benefit from such an ordinance and a designation, being able to apply that to energy standards. Now, that doesn't mean that they're going to leave the whole building uninsulated and force that high utility cost on renters, as, as a discussion I had. They've intended, according to their email, to insulate the attic and roof space, max that out, put in energy efficient windows, energy efficient appliances, but where it benefits them is the side walls on the building, which are masonry, that tend to sweat and have condensation issues, not wanting to fur those out and put insulation, it's going to be water damage in a couple years and create mold issues for the residents. And I think we all know that, that that project is, is pretty close to happening here, and the city and the company tend to benefit greatly from that, through property taxes, 50 additional, or 40 additional housing units, hopefully more employees to workplaces, or, you know, retirees, seniors looking to get out of their homes, moving in there for less maintenance, and then freeing up their houses for families, so. There's, there's plenty, plenty to be gained by this, and again, I kind of lament that it wasn't done back in 2010 with a summer help intern, who you might know, who's sitting here right now, put it forward to the council, so. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. I'll let the public speak. Mr. Weiss?
A couple things. I guess I should probably be a better informed councilperson, but I didn't know this was on the agenda until it showed up for the meeting. You guys can choose to believe that or not, but that's true. Second thing we're finding directly with Mr. Entschew is that Marshall Clinic potentially would benefit financially if impact someone had their daughters, and people would go forward with their proposal. I do not, you know, there's no way that I'm going to benefit financially from anything like that, nor has anybody in Marshall Clinic told me, can you, you know, run some interference with the county board on our behalf? No one, it's actually, Marshall Clinic hasn't really been helping very much with that, so I think suggestion otherwise is, would be, would be fallacious. Having said that, and not seeing that this is on the agenda item until tonight, I'm hearing very strong opposition from everybody on the property committee. You know, my sense of politics is that we should do things very differently from the way things are being done in Washington, where things are very polarized and people are out looking better. Phil and John and I, I think have developed, hopefully we're developing a relationship where there was some trust, and I would rather work, you know, with the county board to try to come up with a mutually agreeable solution for all of this, rather than being, having us perceived whether or not this is actually what we're doing, but we're certainly being perceived as doing something that's underhanded, that's resting control and autonomy from the board, which does own the building, and so, you know, if this comes up for a vote tonight, I'm going to vote no for those reasons. What I would like to see is actually more education, I guess, for all of us on the city council, to see what should be done, you know, I'm big into preservation, I've told the Entschew citizens and testified in terms of, when the county board made its decision to demolish, that I would love to see things refurbished, you know, I've had some wonderful things in Oakley where I spent most of my life, where buildings have been refurbished. That's where I met my partner, it was an old nursing home that was, the Pablo did this fabulous job of, of building something and renovating it. I would love to see that building preserved and refurbished for purposes that everybody, you know, in city government and county government would agree would be good things to do. That's, that's what I would love to see happen. We got a long ways to go to get there, you know, but I think that certainly what I'm hearing from all of you gentlemen, I, I didn't feel like the county board listened to all of us when we were testifying at the county board meeting about this, and we had nine people, community members, talking about how impacts of, and how this is a good proposal to at least consider, and, you know, nobody seemed to consider any of that, but I, I want to be as a representative of, on the council, I understand we're not always going to see eye to eye with the council and county board, but I'd want to work together, let's try to solve this in a way that's going to be, you know, mutually acceptable, so that's, that's my perspective.
Mr. Hoover?
Yeah, I kind of, I didn't know anything about this.
Before we go on, I hate to rain on anybody's parade, but I have two things that I think I would mention. Firstly, if there's no motion before the council, we've got nothing to talk about. Secondly, if the County Property Committee Chairman believes that a city council meeting is the equivalent to meeting at T.O.A., he wouldn't lie to us, if this, if this was a pre-arranged meeting of the County Property Committee, I'm certain that it would have been posted as a meeting. The public has a right to know when their representatives are meeting, and what they're going to meet about, but as Mr. Hauser correctly points out, chance or social meetings of elected officials won't fall under the, the public notice requirements. Who can, I know he wouldn't lie to us about that, that would be, we just wouldn't. But I guess the main point is, the council has no motion before it, and nothing to talk about, so we're splitting the wheels.
Thank you, Mr. Purdy, I'm turning you. So with that, I would entertain a motion on 5E. If there is no motion, one we made, we will move on.
I'll make a motion to reject the ordinance. No. We're, you just said 5E, no, Mr. Van.
D. A D, I'm sorry.
A D?
Delta.
It would be the other way around, a motion to adopt, and there would be a vote on the motion to adopt the ordinance, that might or might not pass or fail.
Would you want to make a motion to table it?
Would you want to make a motion to table it?
That motion is also in order.
I'll make a motion to table it.
We have a motion on second, table. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two. Is there any further discussion?
As far as table it or discussion in general? Well, I...
Mr. Parliamentarian.
Motion table is not debatable.
So with that, we have a motion to table on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five E, review impossible action to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three, revising the rent tax ordinance. We have a motion on second, is there any further discussion?
As I believe in this, like, this one, both point out, this would add, I think, considerable tools to our tourism, being able to promote things, help the folks in the event, so I think China, if I'm honest, could raise up to twenty thousand dollars, which is based on your past experience. Certainly think that, you know, raising taxes comes with a really scary connotation to everybody. Anyway, yeah, I think it's a decent idea to take a look and be more competitive.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Review impossible action to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero four, revising section seven dash two dash sixteen, restrictions on temporary fermented malt beverage or wine licenses. Dr. Weiss, would you like to provide a little background?
Yes. So I believe what we're, unfortunately, we don't have what we're getting rid of here. My recollection was this just happened to do with getting rid of the fencing requirements, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so I mean, I kind of like, like I've told other people, in all scales, I'll be able to train. I don't want to do things that compete social gatherings, and so I think everything that we can do to sell these recreationally, if you have people that want to get get-togethers going, and they want to get the license to the city for temporary fermented malt beverage or wine license. You know, previous ordinance was that we had to have fencing, the fencing had to be set up in the organization. Well, that, from my perspective, that was an onerous, overly onerous restriction. And as long as other laws are being followed, I didn't think that we had to have specific fencing. It just makes it more difficult for people to have the kind of social gatherings that have enabled them to make a better community to live in here, so that was... We're coming from a legal affairs committee voted unanimously to strike that provision, the most special one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just, I guess, speaking on that ordinance, wasn't this passed a few weekends ago now that the lions have the ribbon? Yeah, so I was in attendance at that, I believe you were, a couple other folks were. They had their fencing requirement waived by the council, I believe, with their license, and obviously if you look at the lay of the land, you know, where their event was held in the amphitheater, there are a lot of contours, be a lot of, a lot of work to put up a single fence, let alone a double fence. Lions are no different from the Northland Community Club, the Knights of Columbus, or any volunteer organization, probably even the Fairbord, they all struggle to get volunteers and stuff, and if you had a couple hours on the front end setting stuff up and a couple hours on the back end carrying extra stuff down, it just, it works bolts out sooner, if you got to pay somebody to do it, it cuts into your profits and your ability to do good things in the community. At that event, I was there with my wife and my son, you know, went and grabbed the, I had a couple of beers that night, she drove home, so no worries, but, you know, little, almost two-year-old kid didn't just want to sit there and watch music, didn't want to dance around on the dance floor, he wanted to run around the park, so. I was, you know, we're able to carry in parks as it is, and it was nice, yeah, to be able to keep sitting my girl watching play on the stuff and follow him or I'll be walking her to the good times. If he's having a good time, then I'm having a good time, so. I think that's all. Thank you.
So is there any other discussion on this ordinance?
Yeah, I don't know.
Actually, we need to... We need a motion first. So Dr. Weiss provided the background. I would entertain a motion on this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to adopt point three dash four.
Second, we have a motion on second, is there any further discussion?
So, under the ordinance, under B, it says, no, under each person is prohibited. In any place a gal picks up the food, she picks up the alcohol, carries from one place to another place, is that against the law?
We're not talking about that setting, this is outdoor events.
Currently, in a restaurant setting, an eighteen-year-old can serve alcohol, but not younger.
Is there any further discussion?
That is just relative to the point of sale, so they can't be selling or loitering in the point of sale. If you have a large beer garden, like the Mardi Gras or the Lions event, conceivably someone can be loitering there, just the way I read it, I mean, all around the point of sale.
So all those in favor of adopting ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero four, revising section seven dash two dash sixteen, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? They're being on motion carries. This takes us to item G, review impossible action to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five, revising section seven dash two dash seventeen, beer garden licenses required for outdoor consumption at class B premises. This was also discussed at Legal Affairs.
That eliminated the fencing requirement there, which was a six-foot tall fence that it required, and the beer garden couldn't be larger than fifty percent of the retail space, if I recall currently.
That sound correct?
Correct.
Sherry?
Yes.
Otherwise, yeah, the rest of B stays the same.
Right, so I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt point twenty twenty-three dash zero five, commending section seven point two dash seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second. Mr. Ray.
We have a motion on second, is there any further discussion? Paulman.
I think it just should be pointed out that the state legislature is dealing with this issue of serving, in other words, a young man or a young lady carrying out a tray full of glasses of beverage versus dispensing. And that's the age thing that they're playing with. I don't think they've come to a decision, but these, both of these ordinances reference the state's action. So if they modify it, it will still be in compliance.
Thank you for your additional information, Mr. Paulman. Any further discussion? Mr. Estensel.
I guess I relatively missed the meeting last week, and so I didn't have any prior knowledge of this, and I'm a little confused, like, is there an example of what this would affect and any events it would affect or anything?
Chief, maybe you can provide us with one.
So a lot of things that we talked about in Legal Affairs, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, Mr. what, Dr. Weiss, for example, the ordinance was restrictive of, like, minor station or your establishment. Let's say you want to have on your property a bags tournament, like Minor Station has had in the past, or I think the former, uh, the former D.J.'s wanted to have an outdoor, outdoor event, that they would have had a six-foot, was it a double fence or just a single six-foot fence around? Single six-foot fence around, so that was one of the changes that we were taking out to try to allow for the establishment, if they have the property, to have an outdoor, not having a directed six-foot fence. That's in these terms.
Any further discussion? Mr. Carter.
Mr. Canyon, can you help me on this one? Would I have a concern with the second, and I also have a concern with two members even discussing this as it affects their business and others?
If a council member is affected in a way that is unique to them, that is different from any other council member or member of the public, then they ought to abstain. If, for example, a council member's spouse worked for the city, that council member would not be protected from voting on pay raises for city employees, but if the motion was to increase the wages for a particular, for a particular city employee who had between ten and twelve years of service and was between thirty and thirty-two years of old, years of age, and born on the Fourth of July, a council member whose spouse met that condition would be prohibited from voting on it. And your other concern was...
First was the second. Motion's made, Mr. Raven, second to the motion.
Oh, if it affects him...
Short answer.
Per minute.
Please.
Per minute.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I guess I have one more thing, because what I'm projected here is not really lining up what we're discussing.
There were two things that we got rid of, there was a requirement of fencing for a beer garden, and there was a requirement that the beer garden installed could only be a maximum of fifty percent as big as the indoor premises. So we basically were doing things to make it easier for people to have kind of a beer garden if they're trying to decide to have that kind of happen. Subject to other restrictions that we've got in our areas.
So what I'm reading here is no permit shall be issued for a beer garden in any, if any part of the beer garden is within one hundred feet of a structure used for residential purposes.
So that's not any different.
That hasn't changed.
Okay, they removed that. Okay. Okay, so that's what's staying, what's here, okay.
Yeah, that's what's staying.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for getting rid of that.
Any further discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five H, review impossible adoption of resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures for water and sewer utility improvements along Minor Avenue. We all have a copy attached. Mr. Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is pretty standard with the applications that were filed with the DNR. In this case, it's for the Minor Avenue project that's being targeted in twenty twenty-four. I think we just did one of these last meetings, we need to support for some current projects, so. Same thing there, should be a reimbursement expenditure.
I'll make a motion, group, group.
Second.
We have a motion on the second, is there any further discussion? Call, vote, please.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Raven?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Estensel?
Yes.
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 Yes. Item I, review impossible adoption of resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, compliance payments annual report. Got a copy, I'm running.
Yeah, I made a full copy for everybody. I switched the pages around a little bit, and so the first page, if you look at, is normally the last page, but the first page is what's most important, I guess. That the wastewater treatment plant did receive all A grades this year. In the past couple of years, we have failing grades in finances, but since we instituted our rate increase, now we're out of that, that losing situation, so. I encourage everybody to actually look through it and, you know, ask questions as they arise later on. It just, the DNR requires that you are provided a copy of it and that you see how our treatment plan is performing, and then it requires the council to pass a resolution acknowledging that they have a copy of it and seeing the grades of it, and so in a nutshell, that's it. Somebody has some immediate questions, I can answer them hopefully or wait till later.
Any questions, District One, you're on the compliance report.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen.
Second, we have a motion on the second, is there any further discussion?
Does the crew get a pizza party to get in the four-point O G P?
Yes, figure something out.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
District One, Mr. Estensel.
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Mr. Estensel? District Two, Mr. Johnson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, all I have this evening is library board meeting tomorrow night. I'll tell you more about the solar panels on the bill, so. I will report back next week.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Johnson, Ray?
Yes. Questions for you is, you're going to be tomorrow night for Park Board. I thought you said that.
Library.
Library, sorry. But the Park Board, that's what I'm concerned about, and you're on that committee.
Yep, nothing scheduled that I know as of yet.
All right, thanks, Mark. Anyway, I'm going to just say that we're working on how to hand over the stuff that I've got, folders and so forth, how we can handle them over in the city, because I'm, I'm going to be out of this after this is all done. I've been on it for twelve years now. But we'll do it systematically with you.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Johnson? District Three, Mr. Peterson.
Uh, that's for me to report, except for having a cemetery meeting at two o'clock tomorrow.
Any questions for Mr. Peterson? District Four, Mr. Christiansen.
Two things, if anyone's traveling to Eau Claire in the next month or so and knows where Boyd Park is or can find it on a computer, they've just opened a new skate park there, and since we are giving consideration relocated our facility, I'd like to see what the latest and greatest looks like and see if we can pick up on any ideas, so bring back photos.
What park?
Boyd Park in Eau Claire, directly across the river from Banbury, so the old Union Railway across the footbridge, basically, over the river, it's on that other side, it's on the south side of the river.
Where the parking lot used to be on the other side of the footbridge, fifty years ago.
ago.
Maybe.
Any further questions for Mr. Christensen?
Also, uh, I'm planning, well, I've already written a letter to the editor, not for the first time, about the status of street reconstructions and replacements in the city, and if I write a letter to the editor, it's going to be viewed probably as a comment or a policy of the city awaiting. I'll make it, I'll try to make it clear within the letter, and then I'll put it here that I'll present facts when facts are appropriate, but when there are things in it that are opinions or observations, I will try to redefine those as being my own and not, not city commentary as difficult as that may be.
Mr. Mayor, I think you might appreciate this, there is actually a catch-all phrase that you can put at the end of the, at the end of the thing, if people have seen me writing on social media recently, these views are my personal views and do not necessarily reflect the views of the city, and in your case.
I've seen it, I'll do that.
Any further questions for Mr. Christensen? District five, Dr. Weiss.
We covered legal affairs, we just know the upcoming public hearing in two weeks on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero six, revised in section eleven, four one, outside consumption, right now there's a, there's an ordinance in the city that you can't have an open container locked upon a city street. There are two things that the council is considering, at least the legal affairs committee was considering, the city manager had a proposal based on what he'd seen in another city where kind of have an open carry area within the downtown region, which would encompass the buyers and some of the other businesses, and the other idea is to just get rid of the statue altogether, so it's not illegal to carry an open can of beer along the street, and so there'll be a forum for discussion.
Any further questions for Dr. Weiss?
I just hear that word, you know, the, the chief is involved with oversight for this, so I mean, I basically defer to whatever the chief says in terms of public safety, crime, and all those kind of things, and if the chief had any reservations, we would not be considering either of those possibilities, so I hope I'm not misrepresenting the chief.
No, I think a lot more comments that night after some more research is done, I want to check some of the communities and check with some of the chiefs around the area and just have some conversation, but I think for the public meeting, I'll probably have a public hearing all about some more comments. I agree with that.
Appreciate that.
District six, Mr. Raven.
I have nothing to report on this anymore.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Raven? District seven, Mr. Hoover.
Well, just on the, uh, in my district and also other people have contacted me about, you know, there, I probably noticed there's, uh, they're planting mailboxes all over town between the sidewalk and the road, also between the sidewalks and the house, and they're kind of just all different shapes and sizes. And a couple of my questions were, in some of the streets, the city plows all their snow inside, which eliminates any access to the mailbox. I mean, whose responsibility is that gonna be to keep those clean so that people can get their mail at that point? And also, uh, the, some of the homeowners that I talked to have their mailboxes, their, their request is to put their mailboxes out by the road, and the, uh, the problem that they're having is if they're in a parking space, and if there's a vehicle parked in that parking space, they were told by the US Post Office that they would not deliver their mail. So, and I talked to Sheri a little bit about this, some cities have a guidance policy, some of them bunch all their mailbox at one end of the street, others try to stay away from parking areas. So it, it's especially older people, they're really frustrated. I got planted one on my, at the exchange there, it's from the other side of the street, in which I usually plow, so I mean, it's just a little hassle for me, but, you know, I don't know, you know, I just have to work around it. I was just throwing that out there, that some cities have a policy. Sheri, did you, were able to talk to anybody?
I did call the City of Bryce Lake, because you had mentioned that they have a policy, and they actually do not. They presented it to their council about fifteen years ago, trying to get together some type of a policy, and the council decided that that wasn't their place, let the post office regulate where mailboxes go, and so they do not have a policy. The only thing they do have in place is new developments, and they work with the developer to place them at, you know, more of a group type of placement, but that's just new development. They do not have anything in place for the city.
So I mean, I don't, I know what it actually, but I mean, I would recommend having some sort of policy. I know Sue over there, you know, she has one, actually, I think it kind of got knocked over with the snow, and, I mean, if you have, uh, ten yards of city ice in front of you, you're not gonna, you don't have a place to put it, for one, and, but you still want to get your mail, so, I mean, a good, East Warren, it's not in my district, but same applies, you know, in District Seven up there. Some of the snows get plowed toward the center, and then they're all the way, others just get plowed to the side, and, and Pitts Avenue was another one, there's like three or four feet of snow piled up against the curb, which eliminates any chance to get mail.
Mr. Carter.
I do live in your district, and some of us have been forced to remove snow from our mailbox for over sixty years.
I hear you.
West Fifth Street is, is a rural route, so we have to push snow away from our, our mailbox every snowfall, and where I grew up, same situation, again, in your district.
Any else, Mr. Hoover?
No, that, that's.
Mr. Carlson.
Yeah, Property Committee. I have the Doug, Doug Parker and I are working on how to take care of the stuff that's due on rail display, and last Friday I walked through the whole display, and my list has grown tremendously. Some of the stuff, what, what, what is a list, what to do with rail display? And so some of the stuff's been on there for four, five years, and it's still on there, but the walkthrough create a lot more, so we're working on how to turn it over to the Property Committee. And there's, there's another list of things that got done for twenty twenty-three, that will go along with the top of things as it is.
So, yeah, send the list, your wish list.
Mark?
Send your wish list, and I, I haven't seen anything as, you know, presented.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm going to present that to council, but I didn't inform you first, so if we have to, both of you, we'll give you a copy of it.
Okay.
Before we go to council.
Sounds good, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you.
Anything further for Mr. Hoover? Chief.
I think real briefly, I think about a month ago I informed the council that we had a resignation of one of our officers, Michael Anderson, left Leesman Police Department, he's already currently working at the Rust County Sheriff's Department after they poached him. We are currently in the hiring process, the Police and Fire Commission and I are gonna have interviews in the next few weeks, I'll keep the council informed on, on our process, and eventually, once we do place a hire, I'll bring them here and let you meet them. Fortunately, or unfortunately, I'm not really sure, we had five applicants, eighteen years ago, when I was fortunate to get hired at the City of Leesman, there was a hundred and forty-four applicants, so we did get a couple of good applicants out of the five, so I'm optimistic, but we'll see how, we'll see how things, everything, everything plays out, so like I said, I'll just keep it informed as, as the process goes, you know, that's all I have, otherwise I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Chief. Anybody have a question for you? Mr. Orson, Republican Works Report.
Uh, just a quick update on some of the projects that are going on. Industrial Park Roads, Barnett Gustlison should be paved at the end of this week, Thursday, Friday. Dirt work has already been done, so they, so that should be, that should be wrapping up, you know, weather dependent, by the end of the week, the project should be wrapping up. The drilling for the, the directional drilling for the water may supposed to start on the July ninth or something, or something like that, sometime in the first part of July, they're gonna be back again. Flambow Avenue is, 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 they're going, installing storm sewer up there, so that, you know, that's a pretty busy place up there, between the gas company and the storm sewer work, sometimes it's difficult to get in from one end to the other, you gotta kind of pay attention, and the projects from last year, Summit and Tenth Street will be finished up on their spring punch list and get them tidied up, and we'll be closing them projects, so, so I think that's all I have, unless someone has a question.
Perfect. I understand they hit a gas line today.
Yeah, yeah, so it's congested up there, it's terribly congested, both gas lines are, the, the new ones put in that they have to work around, plus the old one is in that they have to work around, I, I didn't make it up there when they hit it, I was actually on the industrial park when, when that came through, but I, I don't know the particulars on it, but it, it's not an uncommon thing, I mean, that, it happens, you've got a bucket that's five feet wide, and, you know, it's, sometimes you can't fit it in between things, but, so I couldn't hear any more than that, other than they hit one, yep.
Any other questions for the administrator? I hope, take that back, Republican Works Director.
When I went home for lunch today, I saw that my brush, I think all the brush in my neighborhood was picked up. Thank you, thank you.
I seen the truck working down quite a bit today.
Yeah, we have two crews going, at least for this week, we have two full, two chippers going, trying to get that completed so we can actually get on with our normal winter, or winter summer work, you know?
Item fifteen, administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like to direct this to Mr. Unterschutz first, apologies if you took any of my counterleading commentary personal, certainly wasn't intended that way, realistically, you know, we here at the city have laws that we have to follow, just like the county does, and I know I try my best to follow those, so that was just kind of, kind of an odd point with me. I do appreciate you still sticking around here after the item of county interest and listening to the, the rest of the, the city discussion, being informed citizen, so thank you very much for your time doing that.
Any questions for the administrator? Attorneys report.
In the current issue of White Run News is a feature article on the Henry All-Weather Sawgate Big Boar Side-Voting Forty-five Seventy Lever Gun of the Twenty-First Century. Henry is doing very well. I saw a little article the other day that in the past twelve months, Henry has donated a million dollars for various carries. Their, their new rifle is marked on the side, Henry Repeating Arms, Rice Lake, Wisconsin, made in USA, well, it's not quite ladies' but, but it's close. Secondly, uh, the legislature has now reached an agreement and will send to the governor a proposal to repeal the personal property tax assessments in the state. That will reduce the amount Wisconsin businesses pay in tax by a hundred and seventy-five million. It will also change the status of personal property that has previously been, been described as an equipment cover to be part of the real estate. If, for example, a business had a cover over their sawmill or, or a cover over their chip producing machinery, that cover will now be assessed as real estate rather than having previously considered as personal property. Thirdly, I talked to the council in the past about a derelict dwelling that the council directed me to perceive with a condemnation of, of which the, well, it's been sold to a local landlord who now has a building permit to rehabilitate and restore that dwelling, so it is not necessary that it be condemned, it will be rehabilitated and made suitable for workforce housing, we all know we're desperately short of, you know, that's all I got.
I think we're gonna have to add Ed Henry unofficially ambassador to your table.
Somebody at this table wanted to know if he was a market, part of the marketing team. I don't have any guns, I don't even believe in guns.
Any questions for the city attorney? All right, moving on. Item seventeen, licenses and permits, you'll have a list in front of you. But if you operate licenses.
I'll make a motion to approve the operator license applications, approved by PD.
Pause by Sam.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the two temporary Class P beer and wine licenses. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the two temporary Class B licenses. Is there any further discussion?
Will we be published in time on those ordinance revisions, you know, meet Friday? Would, uh?
Well, I should say just now, we could probably get it in the paper if we got it over to you tomorrow morning.
Probably, if that's not my department.
Otherwise, I.
Send Kyle some cookies.
Otherwise, it may be suggested at least consideration of the motion in second, waive the fencing requirements and everything. It would be subject to under the current ordinance until the new one is published.
I'll amend my motion. I'll amend it second.
We have an amended motion, an amendment, amended second to remove the fencing requirement for the two temporary Class B beer and wine licenses. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's forum. Item A, action to appoint Marlene Tomb with a full remaining Park Board term vacated by Georgie Anderson. Uh, Georgie Anderson's term expires next spring. I just want to thank her for, for service on the Park Board, it's greatly appreciated.
I'll make a motion to.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B. I don't talk much, but I feel like talking tonight, so I am not a professional politician, I am a twenty-nine-year factory worker that decided to run for this position because nobody did, when somebody that was gonna take this job seriously. I hope nobody in this room doesn't think I take this job seriously, because I do, I invest a lot of time in it. I haven't put in for a meeting per diem in a long time, I get hollered at by my wife for that, she's like, you're spending that time, you should do it. I don't look at it that way, I look at that as my community service, and I'm happy to do it. So whether you think of me as a fill-in, or temporary, or placeholder, so be it, I have no problem with that. The one thing I said when I ran for this position, I was gonna do the best job that I could possibly do, and I try to do that every time I'm in here. Am I a professional parliamentarian? No, mistakes are made. Nothing's done intentionally, with the help of Mr. Kenyon, we get through it. And that is all I'm gonna say about that. Thank you. So, moving on to item nineteen, co-session. Action to go into co-session under authority granted in Wisconsin statute, section nineteen point eight five one D, consider the demotion, dismissal, licensing, discipline, or tenure. Public employer pressing license by a border commission. This exception permits preliminary discussion and investigation without the necessity of providing actual notice to the individual involved. However, for any evidentiary hearing to be conducted or formal action taken, notice must be given to the person involved, so that he or she can exercise his right or her right to request an open session.
You don't think the property committee chairman would like to listen?
This time I entertain a motion to come out of co-session.
Make a motion to come out of co-session.
We have a motion in a second to come out of co-session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are out of co-session. Action taken from the first co-session, with the council agreed to, I'll have to read back the, the motion again, please, Sheri.
Uh, motion by Dr. Weiss, seconded by Nathan Johnson, that we not renew the liquor license application for West Coop Lane, and also we won't their current liquor license effective tomorrow.
Thank you. Item twenty-one, co-session, action to go into co-session under authority granted in Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E. To deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public property, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a co-session, to wit, to consider making an offer to acquire industrial property with or without partners for the purpose of industrial development and possible action. Make a motion, go on, opposed?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to go into close, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Raven?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover? Mr. Estenso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, there was no action taken in co-session. Moving on, item twenty-three, co-session, action to go into co-session under the authority granted in Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E. To deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of property, public property, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a co-session, to wit, to consider making an offer to exchange industrial property or hospital property. Make a motion, go on, closed.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Pastor Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Raven?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Estenso?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Being none, we are out of co-session. As a result of that last co-session, no action was taken. That, we'll move on to item twenty-five, adjournment.
Go move on.
I have a motion, I have a second, I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Are you still, uh, Mr. Chair, are you still holding your meeting?
No.
Is it raining?
Yes.
The community development committee was going to meet in tour to Madazinski House, but I, I think we'll put that off at some point. This was a pretty loaded meeting.
It's worse.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.